All right, okay, call this door, roll call please.
Here.
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 Here. A little bit late, yeah. All right, this is a closed session, a closed session of the city council may be held in accordance with the state law which may include but is not limited to the following types of items: personnel matters, labor negotiations, security matters, providing instructions to real property negotiators, and conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation. The closed session will be held at the City Hall Conference Room located at 6136 Adobe Road, Torrey Palms, California. Any public comment on closed session items will be taken before the closed session. Any required announcements will be discussed in the closed session items or actions following the closed session will be made in the city council chambers at 6136 Adobe Road, Torrey Palms, California. Item one, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, government code section five four nine five six dash nine D two, one case, Ryan Parker claim. Okay, we're going, oh, any public comment on our closed session? Seeing none, okay, we're now in a closed session.
He is a minute and a half out.
Yeah.
You already dropped one of these, right?
You already dropped one of these, right?
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
I guess we're supposed to go back there, and then you find out what happened there.
I don't know, I just remember walking down the street.
Are they having, were they having, are you guys doing work here? You want that one? Sure. I'm there. I mean, move this chair. Mm, yeah, there's nothing. Yeah, my lucky face, I like the table, don't mind this.
No, not at all.
Um, that's cool. We'll talk to Rick.
Well, okay. Trying to figure out which way.
Happy with the event?
Yes.
It went really well from what I saw. Yeah. Are you gonna tell them thank you?
I'll be going too.
Hello, what are you doing? Good, thank you.
How you doing?
Spoken time, right? Yeah, we met a few times back in the office.
Yeah, remember.
Oh, thank you.
Rob, close the closed session, there's nothing to report from the meeting.
Yeah. But, uh, before.
He wants to show us how to do one of those. After two years.
Yeah. Here's the.
Hi, ma'am.
How are you doing?
I'm good, you too. Thank you. Straight out of the bottle, not a clue that I'm here.
This was really nice.
Hello, thank you. For, it's for credit for my class, I have to attend these meetings.
Good day, this beautiful sunshine.
Can be trying.
Christmas presents. And I think they'll be. They're very rounded.
Okay. As a bird.
This really is nice, I like this. Just something everybody should keep in the car.
I guess that might be why.
Yeah. I have a friend who during the shutdown. See, that car, it's a crew. It's a real bike up there. Going after children.
He has extras.
Oh, okay. We have our next two, just probably. These are really great.
Yeah, um, we had extra.
So, are you ready for the holidays?
Getting there. I know we have all year to get this done, but I don't know why I. Why it's, uh, I, I guess I'll have to see if I can meet the deadline.
How much you, your ten dollars?
I sent you that one just, what was it, last month? Yeah, that's him, yeah. Yeah, but I, I do need to add, I think there's a dog sculpture from.
Oh, that's.
Um, I think there's a really nice, uh, made. Science.
I liked the, the geckos. They're on the, uh. Big block. They're grinding. Uh, Washington Artist School, I don't know where the artist was. They did the same thing with some back in the day on Grant. They did the same thing with. The hat check thing. Especially if. One of them.
They did it. We. I know, I was talking to my.
Good, here?
Living drain. That was not like to my allergies. To my allergies.
Oh, your allergies.
But it's nice to not be sick.
Yeah. Oh, I. Oh, is it for the council? Yes.
Well, I know. Jordan, is my ash? My ash? Audrey. Oh, great. Who was on, who was taking us? Who wants, there's still one. There's more than.
We can't.
Hi. Are you ministering now? Oh, good.
I'm sure. You remember, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Audrey. Here, I should move stuff. Hello. Come on in. Oh, thank you. Hi, Emery.
Hey, everyone. How are you?
Good to see you again.
Uh, Scott, were you guys on your food?
Uh, good. I love you. It's a little, uh, holiday-ish.
Yes, you are. You look wonderful. You're very festive. And I love that.
Could you give me this pen, Roger? Hi, Leah Clark, how are you?
Good, how are you, Sandy?
I feel like I should be seeing you December. We always see each other.
I know. I, I, I am shocked, so, but you're. You must have clones of you, because I don't know how you're all these different places.
I'm not.
I mean, you're out of state and then before I know it, you're down at the country and then you're over here painting something. And I'm like, how is she this many places? Logistically, it's impossible.
So much of that stuff, all the market stuff I scheduled, like I scheduled. Audrey here, if you're wondering, this present. Thank you.
What is it really? Got a couple extras for the front.
I know, I thought this was great. I have my little, like, my little, like, travel pack.
But how did we get you at a city council meeting? You are literally.
I know, well.
Every.
I feel like I'm kicking the two bricks once.
Oh, well, that's the way you gotta do it.
Far worse market stuff is on there, which I would do, um, if it wasn't for my base in one basin. So basin one, oh, they should have the treasure on their board.
Oh.
Is by volunteer, like the others does by real jobs. But, um, they won that Levitt grant. We lose it.
Right.
So, um, yeah.
Well, there was a community effort.
It definitely was.
Of course, they have. They have. You guys.
Yeah, right, so that's why I'm the CEO.
I got you.
I think I'm the one, um, who. Probably, Paul is here, um, vice president, but he travels to everywhere.
Council, uh, I swept up tonight.
Yep. Last meeting for the year.
Who's having Pat next to me next time?
Well, and Paul, so we have Mr. Sharp over there, so. So I guess.
Oh, yeah. He got, uh, yeah, he picked that up. He took me. Well, I mean, it's. You know, it's great. Always great to see and see. We're still there.
We're here.
I have one. I think I like something. That is really like. I don't know.
You know what I'm saying, that you could actually, I mean, like Audrey was saying, there are members of the state, uh, you know.
Oh, I just put go ahead and. That's what I was. These are. I'm gonna stab my ass.
I made it larger. I, um.
I'll see if they actually. Here. I'm glad. It has a. We're great. I'm glad. I just wanted to meet somebody.
Well.
I mean, that's all. I didn't know that either.
Good.
Yep. That's what I said. And the Paris is. I forgot. I've got my.
I was gonna talk about my last Black Lives Act. It's really. Well.
I mean, they have. And I'm not gonna share. After. Well, I'll share the Levitt. As long as the Levitt City Council, the Levitt. I'll share. See if you get a date or whatever.
Were you fired this morning or?
I'm sitting.
My God.
Certainly.
You heard on the radio last?
Yeah.
I did. I thought it was.
Jared, Jared, you know, I, you know, we wanted to do my last. He gets to this. Getting at you.
He started there.
I think you're.
Wow.
Like, uh. He has. Yeah.
I'm working. He got ten hundred in.
Oh, wow.
I'm. Yeah, I, I think the lower Yesser kind of must been a little disappointing. Giving the explicit. That it's been. As you know, what's going on with the Yesser sort of happening. Uh, but then you have a lot of new people coming in all the time, so the ones that were there, you know, during the years that really been promoting, like, you know, those. Well, I'm wondering if that's part of it, just the artists are necessarily. But they're working.
Right.
I mean, you have to start something. And I think, you know, that's. Right, and you know what I'm saying, where they came out and, and, you know, they should be the new artists.
Sandy. How's Sarah doing?
Yeah.
It's a cool story. She's on the.
I'm sure. Like, stay. Once you give the implication. Of whatever. Sometimes people ask me, they're like, well, I mean, what am I? What have I done? You know, that's when I say. You see. Great for us.
Hi. Oh, yeah, no, I heard someone else. Uh, Jared, I didn't hear. No. Sorry. I know all my friends, younger ones better.
I thank you for saying. It's the last meeting of the year, so it is, you know, if it's a hot topic. It's. Otherwise. So you really have a special line to live in. Because you are first in the first meeting. This year, and then also. And. Sure, the last. So you have so that.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, so you are, you are the big spotlight. You're the last man. Nobody will tell us that. We are. Um, we. That's why I tell people, this is the most important thing, it's the last one. Recognition. Christmas. We're all trapped. Are you? We were. We're. They're polished.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I used to.
Yeah, we were gonna go. The mayor called him right after the flood. Last vestal scan, those that are going to stand. And then you're just. So you are here for such a time as this. Let's see. Did I rent? You can tell your parents that I was at this council meeting for a time. Raise.
I did a little bit. I did, um, fifteen hundred. Boy, that's exciting. Then I. I'm all. All.
What part of town is it?
Um, I'm, uh, really. Um, this is Solomon, so also.
I'm on Utah Trail, just south of.
Okay. I can see, um, on my kitchen window, basically, you said it's all that way.
I. I broke into that. I am. So. Maybe I'm. I'm. I promise I won't. I live right behind it.
Oh, okay, yes.
It's like a field and then my house, which is great on the fourth of July, if I just. If I.
It's. I saw there was a fire. It's my back.
Great.
Everyone doing good? Good, good Thanksgiving? Yes. Lot of food? Full? Stretchy pants? Yep. Got it, same here. I'm gonna do a New Year's resolution, so I'm gonna go ahead and just get all the weight I can now until my resolution starts, alright, so. Get warm. Get my winter coat on. We're just waiting for some documents. Alright, here we go. Call this meeting to order. Mr. Ray is releasing the pledge.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you wish to stand, invocation by Minister Jeremy Young from St. Ray Church.
Uh, let, let us bow our heads as we go before the Lord. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for allowing us to make it to this place. We th- we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to make it through the year as we enter into the final meeting. For Twenty Nine Palms, Lord. Lord, we ask that you bless this meeting, Lord. We ask, Lord, that you guide the leaders of this meeting, Lord. We ask, Lord, that as we, as we gather here and as we come together and as we talk about the needs of the community and how we can better serve them, Lord. May you grant us, Lord, the, the peace, Lord, to be able to make policy that helps everyone, Lord. May you allow us, Lord, in times of contention, Lord, that we may find common ground, Lord, that we may settle on a resolve that we are here to serve the people, your people, Lord, your children, Lord. May we all come together, Lord, in unity as we, as we leave this year of twenty twenty-five and as we go into the year twenty twenty-six, Lord. Allow us to not be the same, Lord. Allow us to be better than ever before as we walk in grace, Lord, and as we walk in purpose, as we walk in unity, Lord. Allow your word to be the guiding light that guides our steps, that guides our speech, that guides our actions. And may we ne- never be the same because of it, not as an individual, Lord, but as the city of Twenty Nine Palms, Lord. Allow people to know that we serve a God that we love. More importantly, we serve a God that loves us, that sent his son to die on a cross for our sins, Lord. And it is within that truth that we will always see the love of Christ in all of our brothers and sisters. May we remember this as we leave twenty twenty-five and that we usher in a new year of twenty twenty-six and we walk into it victorious, knowing that we will walk in your purpose, walk in your will. And walk in your glory. And all these things I ask in your mighty, your majestic, Jesus' name, I pray, amen.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Protements?
Here.
Mayor Bildrick?
Here.
All present?
There's no closed session announcements, change the agenda? There's no close session announcements. Change the agenda?
Uh, no, sir.
Alright, announcements. These proceedings may be viewed on demand on the City of Twenty-Nine Palms website, www.twennypalms.org. You may also livestream this meeting by going on the city website and clicking on meeting agendas link. Awards, presentation, appointments, and proclamation. Number two, introduction to new sheriff's captain, Captain Steve Scoville. Did I say it right? Alright. And presentation to outgoing captain, Captain Robert Warwick, which I know he's not here. Mr. Huff, are you accepting that in his? I'll let you do the introduction first.
A little shorter and a little more handsome than Captain Warwick, but, uh, he's just gonna have to deal with that one.
More hair, too.
Good evening, mayor and council. Locals, how are you guys? So, just wanna, uh, make a quick introduction of our new, uh, incoming. Actually, he's actually here, so I can't say incoming anymore. So, uh, Steve Scoville, he was recently promoted on the twenty-ninth of this month, and so he's entering, what, second week here in Morongo. So, he's a valley guy, not really a desert guy, but he's learning that it does get cold out here, so. Just a little bit about Steve. Uh, he was hired, he's, he's hired back in ninety-seven, entering his twenty-ninth year. He's had several different assignments as a deputy. He's worked corrections at, uh, our Glen Helen Rehabilitation Center and our West Valley Detention Center. Um, he did his patrol time in San Bernardino at Central Station. Um, also as a deputy, he was assigned to our training division. Um, in two thousand and five, he was promoted to the rank of detective. Uh, during that time, he, uh, spent some more time within our training division, and that was when he found his, his newfound love as a bomb stomper. So he was in our arsons and bombs division pretty much throughout his, the majority of his career. So, uh, two thousand and thirteen, um, Steve was promoted to the rank of sergeant. He was assigned to the High Desert Detention Center. Um, and once again reassigned to our arson and bombs division. He also worked our central detention center as a sergeant. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-two, he was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. And as previously mentioned, on the twenty-ninth, he was promoted to the rank of captain, so. I've known Steve for his entire career, basically. Great guy. He's, he's gonna be a great replacement for Captain Warwick. Hopefully, this isn't on record, but he's a much better golfer than Captain Warwick. Um, but, uh, I, I welcome Steve wholeheartedly, and I think he's gonna do the City of Twenty-Nine Palms very well, very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, I just wanna start to, by saying that I'm very excited to be here when the sheriff, uh, called me a few weeks ago, said I was being promoted and told me I was coming out to the Morongo Valley. Couldn't be happier. Um, it's well-known within our agency that the Morongo Station is one of the better ones to be assigned. Little bit of a drive for me. I'm coming from Highlands, so, um, but I would consider this one of the better assignments, uh, within our department. Um, looking forward to keep me, or, you know, uh, picking up where Captain Warwick left off. Obviously, those are some big shoes to fill. He was here for three years, four years. Um, so hopefully I can continue the interaction with city staff that he had along with the community, uh, if there are any issues that arise. Um, it's my first time being assigned here, but like, uh, Lieutenant Huff said, I was with our arson and bomb division. We were out here a lot with all the military ordinance in the desert and things just seemed to catch fire in the desert a lot, so. I, I, I superficially know the area, um, but I do plan on, uh, doing a much better job of, of knowing the city and also the county areas. Um, so I'm open for any questions, if council has any?
Council questions? No? Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. Right, moving on. Number three, your presentation by Joshua Tree National Park. There she is.
Hey, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, if I haven't met you yet, or we haven't seen each other in a while, I'm Jane Rogers. I'm the park superintendent of Joshua Tree National Park. And, um, and good evening, everybody here tonight. Um, I have a special, um, acknowledgement that I wanna do tonight. So, uh, in October and November of this year, uh, we had a lapse in our appropriations. And during that period of time, uh, some of the staff, uh, some of my staff were struggling a little bit, kinda waiting for paychecks and seeing how things would go. Um, and this is a, this is a night that I really wanna celebrate the community of Twenty-Nine Palms. We had a number of individuals who came forward to really show support and some love for my Rangers. And before I invite some, a couple of my friends up here, um, I did wanna acknowledge, um, uh, first of all, the Joshua Tree National Park Association, who, uh, has formally taken over management of the Twenty-Nine Palms Visitor Center. So I'm very grateful uh, to Executive Director Jackie Guevara. And of course, uh, Stone James here for collaborating on making that happen. Uh, last March, without those efforts, without Stone and Jackie working together, uh, we would have been faced with closing that visitor center for the duration, and instead, we were able to keep that open, um, thanks to our great partners. And thanks to Stone for keeping the foot on the gas on that one and making that happen. Thank you. Uh, I also wanted to thank Stone personally for, uh, working with my team to have a picnic event at one of the community, um, spots over at Lucky Park where we were able to have a potluck and get together and share some camaraderie during that lapse in appropriations, and that was really sweet. Um, I also wanna thank, um, a couple of folks who are here tonight. Uh, and I'd like to invite my friend Heidi Grin up here uh, to thank her personally for really opening up the doors of the Twenty-Nine Palms Inn and welcoming in park rangers. Um, her and a number of her friends in the community provided, made a fantastic dinner for us. Um, you guys had a little music playing. Um, and it was just a great way to lift our spirits, and so, uh, Heidi, on behalf of Joshua Tree National Park and the Park Service and my team, I just wanna thank you for that. And I get to, you gotta come up here so I can embarrass you a little bit more. And, uh, I might make Heidi do this, uh, so Heidi, Heidi's a great dancer, and so am I. Um, Heidi has a number of folks who helped that night as well to acknowledge, and I know Charlie's here tonight as well, but, um, I'll hand it over to you.
Yeah, alright. Um, I'm not very good at this public speaking thing, but, um, it was an honor to, uh, to, I don't know, just share some, some community spirit with the Park Service staff, um, during the shutdown. Um, yeah, we had fun. So basically, Jane said, you know, things are getting a little rough out here. Maybe we could try to put something together, and I said, okay, I'm totally up for it, and, uh, anyhow, it got to be kind of a lot of people. And I'm like, let's involve, let's see if we can reach out to the rest of the community and see if anybody else is interested in helping out. So it was really fun to have, I got people from Rockies, I got Christie from Rockies to donate a bunch of pizza, and like the, uh, distillery, Joshua Tree Distillery delivered, dropped off a bunch of extra spirits. Um, who else in town? So Moso Menos did, they also helped contribute some spirits. Um, Joshua Tree, I know that Campbell House Bakery got cookies. I mean, it was great. It was really great. Um, we had music from Wendy and Mike and Steve. And everybody had a great time. And Charlie. And Charlie totally, totally like killed it. She got Cisco to deliver, or drop off, uh. She can't stand it.
Yeah, we, we love our park people.
Charlie from the Des.
Yeah, I'm from the Des, and, but I've been with the inn, I was with the inn for almost eighteen years cooking there. I was one of their chefs. And, um, so when we did this that night, there was US Food Cisco, I made a couple of phone calls. Said we needed this product, you know, to put on this dinner. Heidi was already doing something, so I wanted to help, and Rockies, yeah, it was, we just love the park, and we love everybody from the park. It's our home, you know, it's our place to go as well as all the tourists, so. Thank you, Jane.
Well, thank you. And I just have a challenge claim for you. So thank you.
Thanks. I'm a junior ranger now. I did also, uh, just so the council knows, if you'd like me to come back at a different time and do a state of the park, I'm happy to do that, and I'll, I'll make sure to get on the calendar for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Number four, recognition to Anna Stump and Audrey Philpot for the work on the Twenty-Nine Palms Music Festival. Mr. Stone James, you wanna lead off?
You bet, mayor. Uh, so I know this is something that was, uh, important to the council, to recognize these two individuals for their contributions. So a little bit of a background. So, uh, both are heavily involved, but they're not formal representatives of the city, at least at this time. We've got even more. This is just fabulous. And so, Ms. Anna, would you like to introduce, uh, everyone up there, please?
Audrey, would you like to?
I would be happy to introduce these people to you. First of all, the most fabulous right-hand person ever, Anna Stump, Anna Stump. Thank you, Anna. She is the vice chair of this committee. And an invaluable member from the very outset in the concept of doing this music series. Uh, Remo Packer, who is our, uh, music selector. He is really working on that aspect of pulling the concerts together, 'cause it's one thing to get the grants, and it's another thing to make sure that the concerts actually happen. And then we have our secretary here, Jordan Ash. And Jordan Ash was instrumental in writing the grant. And he is an excellent, I probably shouldn't say this too loud because I selfishly wanna keep them all to ourselves, but he is an excellent grant writer and an attorney here in Twenty-Nine Palms and a va- very valuable member of this committee. Now, I also want to introduce Jane Marie uh, from, uh, the Basin Wide Foundation, and perhaps you can say your last name for us, Jane Marie?
Oh, Ova Hulu. Ova Hulu.
Okay. And, uh, Jane Marie is the, uh, executive director of the Basin Wide Foundation, and they are the financial sponsors of our grant, because they wouldn't just write out a check to me, unfortunately. So, um, and then we have other members of the Basin Wide Foundation here, if you just stand up and wave. So we know that you're here. Uh, you know, you may know Sandy Smith, who's a resident here in Twenty-Nine Palms, and then we have two other members of the Board of Directors of the Basin Wide, uh, Foundation here to, um, to share this honor with us. And, uh, thank you very much to all of the members of the, uh, city council, city manager, city clerk. Thank you very much. We are honored to be here, and, you know, our work is not over yet, because we have three years of concerts to produce. And we need the support of everyone here to make that happen. And I know I can count on that support. I know that there are members of this council who have helped already tremendously. And I know that, mayor, I am your favorite person, so. You said it in public.
I did, I did.
So, so I think I picked the right person to introduce the group. She's, I know, a little shy. I recognize that.
Uh, are there any questions that anybody has about the, the music series?
Questions?
So, so maybe what I just thought I would do to introduce to the, uh, overall community about that movie Seers, really, right? And so you two came up with the idea, hey, there's this grant that can, that if we compete, you wanna just give thirty-second discussion about this grant and how competitive and how we were number twelve nationally?
Yes, I'll, I'll be glad to share that. And Anna, if you'd like to chime in at any point, I don't wanna steal the entire stage. Uh, so first of all, uh, in twenty twenty-four, I discovered that the Levitt Foundation was giving grants to basically underserved communities to produce music and bring the community together. These are free concerts in a public space in the community. And, uh, I asked my friend Anna, who was at that time, uh, the chair of the PAC, to, uh, speak with, uh, a grant officer from the Levitt Foundation and begin to, the, explore the possibility of doing this. Well, that was in June of twenty twenty-four. We had to wait until May of twenty twenty-five when the grant period opened. And then we could start talking to, uh, different groups in the community about our desire to do this, and we found that there was a lot of support. We started, I think, with, uh, Rediscover Twenty-Nine was the first presentation that we made, and that's where we met Jordan. And then we went to the Rotary Club, and that's where we met Remo. And, uh, then we were at, at the Rotary Club, we said, we still need that nonprofit to be our sponsor, and it was Sandy who said, what about the Basin Wide Foundation? So, just to make, to wrap this up, um, the grant is for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to produce thirty concerts over three years. And, uh, so the concerts will be starting in April of twenty twenty-six, five concerts in five Saturdays. And then, uh, we will continue in, skip the summer, and then continue in the fall with another five concerts, and we'll be doing this for three years straight. And there is the possibility that if we do a really good job, we can get this grant renewed. So, it's all very exciting, and I wanna thank the support of so many people here in this room, on this council, city manager, Stone James, uh, thank you very much for your support, and we are going to make this happen big time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna get the certificate now.
Me, me and the lawyer hang out with you. Come on, Paul.
I acknowledge Paul Razzo, the social media genius who put our.
Hang out with us.
We could not have done it without you.
Is Paul hiding? Is Paul over here? Uh-oh. Come on, Paul. Alright, number five, presentation by Twenty-Nine Palms Youth Council on this year's achievements.
Good evening, city council and members of the community. Today, I, Chairwoman Hermesio and Councilman Walsh shall do a brief presentation on the items of the Twenty-Nine Palms City Council, City Youth Council has accomplished thus far, and additionally introduce our goals for this term. I give the floor to Councilman Walsh.
First off, starting tonight, we have our volunteering efforts at the Twenty-Nine Palms Community Food Pantry, where we assisted primarily in unloading and organizing donations. The event was attended by Councilman Sumption, Chairwoman Viviana Hermesio, Vice Chairman Jackson Sumption, and Kevin Marshall, as pictured here.
The construction of the outhouse for the, what was it, Pioneer Day Parade outhouse race was quite difficult, but it was a surmountable task with the help of fellow council members as well as parent volunteers, including previous council members' parents, and generous donations from both parents and community members. Within a week, we managed to brainstorm, problem-solve any issues we encountered, build, and spray paint the outhouse as it now shows in all its glory. And yes, it's pink. The youth council decided to express our military pride and patriotism for the Twenty-Nine Palms, Marine Corps, and our country, honoring the 250 years of service. Following on this topic, Councilman Walsh will share his summation of the outhouse race.
Thank you, Councilman, Chairwoman Hermosillo. Utilizing our newly constructed outhouse and doing our best together as a team, we participated in the outhouse race, becoming truly unstoppable as we earned the second-place toilet seat trophy as well as the golden plunger awarded to us for being the fan favorite carts.
Continuing our previous goals of reaching out to our community elders, we established a monthly visit to our local senior center and spent quality time with the sagacious men and women there monthly. Through these visits, we not only offer companionship, but also gain invaluable insight from their wisdom, stories, and life experiences, strengthening the bond between generations and enriching our understanding of the community we serve. These meaningful interactions inspire us to approach our community work with greater empathy and dedication. By listening to the perspectives of our elders, we are reminded of the importance of service, respect, and fostering connections that endure beyond our time in the youth council. Each visit reaffirms our commitment to building a stronger and more compassionate community for all. Councilman Walsh will now introduce our newest initiative, which we consider as an issue in the heart of our community that we wish to potentially resolve with concurrent involvement of both the Marongo Unified School District and the city council.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hermosillo. This year, we have partnered with the National Youth Leadership Council as part of their Youth as Solutions program. Both Chairwoman Hermosillo and Councilman Marshall are leading this project. Having previously worked with them for a leadership training last year, we took the opportunity to further work with them to establish a new project this year. We are beginning by surveying, we are beginning by surveying local high schools and middle schools to gain a better perception, to gain a better idea of their perceptions and understandings of vaping in the community and understand what they understand. We have already formulated the survey and begun getting approval from MUSD. In addition to this, we also hope to disseminate both this survey and surveys similar in future events of ours to further gain valuable insight about the problem in our community.
Recently, for the city's annual holiday tree lighting ceremony and parade, the youth council led and held the banners, as well as captured memories with children in the community and cemented smiles everywhere we went. Moving forward, the youth council is eager to accomplish even more in the following months and anticipate great things. I thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share our progress and goals for this term. Thank you, city council, for your ongoing support and for believing in the mission of the youth council and allowing us to serve in our full capacity.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Next, presentation by the Public Arts Advisory Committee.
Hello, everyone. So, for those who don't know, we are the PAC, the Public Arts Advisory Committee for the city of Twenty-Nine Palms. Our mission is to enrich the public environment for both residents and visitors, to nurture, enhance, and encourage the community's participation in the arts, to enable Twenty-Nine Palms to enhance its identity as an arts community, and to increase public access to promote an understanding and awareness of the arts. Our current members are Rita Lilly, Angeles, Dr. Zareen Eskandar, our co-chair Sarah Lyons, and myself, Paul Rozzo, the current chair. It was a year of turning new ground for the PAC with a new administrator, two fresh new members, and our most senior member, myself, having only served a year. It was largely a year of learning for us, learning how to work with each other, learning how to work with the city, and learning how to define the future of art in Twenty-Nine Palms. In spite of a few growing pains, I am proud of what we accomplished this year. Our strategic planning subcommittee headed up by Dr. Eskandar and Rita Lilly put extensive research into building and defining what the future of the arts may look like in our city. Citing cities of similar demographics, they found a return of investment of $3 to $6 for every $1 invested in the public arts. They have also started compiling an artist registry, creating a database of artists and their mediums local to Twenty-Nine Palms. Our exhibition subcommittee headed by Dr. Eskandar and Angeles hosts quarterly art shows at the Twenty-Nine Palms Visitor Center. This year's shows were curated by the Mojave Artists of Color Collective, Groundwork Arts, Sunspot Artist Co-op, and a collection of artists currently curated by our subcommittee members, who are doing our fall exhibition that runs through December. Our existing Future in Public Arts Subcommittee led by co-chair Sarah Lyons and myself are happy to report that we checked a big box off our to-do list with the repair and powder coating of Chuck Kaplenger's iconic 29 exclamation point sculpture. This wouldn't have been possible without the help of Craig Stacy and the amazing crew down at Public Works. In addition to the Public Arts and Mural Directory maintained by Action Council Twenty-Nine, our subcommittee has also began compiling a catalog of existing design assets around the city. From flagpole flags to street signage, city departmental logos, down to the trashcans, we hope to archive and hone in on a cohesive design system that defines our city. Our PR Subcommittee headed up by Rita and Sarah Lyons have been focusing on creating a current and usable list of media contacts to better help publicize arts events in our area. They have also been strategizing how the PAC can leverage social media to draw better attention to resources and events pertaining to artists. The PAC Grant Subcommittee led by Rita Lilly and myself were able to provide funding for events, demonstrations, and workshops. From Mojave Land, the Joshua Tree National Park Association, Desert Tree, the Twenty-Nine Palms Creative Center, the Mojave Artists of Color Collective, the Joshua Tree National Park Council for the Arts, Theater Twenty-Nine, Good Vibes Cinema, Black Cactus, the Twenty-Nine Palms Artist Guild, the High Desert Fashion Institute, and High Desert Times. Our newly established Performing Arts Subcommittee led by Rita Lilly and Angeles created and now maintains a comprehensive list of venues available for arts programming, performances, and community events. The mission of this committee are to empower the community to organically establish art hotspots rather than having them imposed upon us, highlight venues across neighborhoods that encourage equitable accessibility, provide affordable spaces for local artists to invite and invite out-of-town performers to establish collaboration, to simplify planning for organizers and build long-term infrastructure for our thriving arts community, engage with local businesses, nonprofits, and schools as venue partners, and to give the PAC the opportunity to identify locations for public art around the city. For an update concerning our Arts Advocate of the Year Committee, I highly recommend you attend our meeting next Wednesday at 5:00 PM. Needless to say, it's been a big year for the arts in Twenty-Nine Palms. Recent articles from Visit California and Travel and Leisure both mentioned Twenty-Nine Palms as a vibrant arts destination. We've had so many great, so many great gallery shows, events, public installations, public performances, readings, the Return of Our Chalk Festival, and an ever-expanding music scene capitalized by the receiving of the Levitt Music Series, thanks to Twenty-Nine Palms Music Committee. For 2026, the PAC is looking forward to continuing to define the strategic plan for the arts that aligns with the city's overall master plan, repair more local art pieces and add new ones to our portfolio, complete more wayfinding and beautification efforts around the city, expand our artist registry, support amazing artists that call this city home, and make this a beautiful and inspiring place for all our residents to live. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number seven, comments by the outgoing mayor, which will be me, and some more presentations and recognition. All right. So, going with the flow of presentations and recognition, start this one off. This was pretty much, this was pretty easy. So, as you know, I was the mayor last year, and we had our Citizen of the Year award. But over the last couple of years, I started noticing individuals everywhere I go. And not just because I'm the mayor at every event. I get to go places. I see a lot of people. But then I started seeing them at not-city events, high school games, youth sports games, All-Star games. And not, most of the time, maybe as a fan sitting in the stands, when I know their kid doesn't play. I don't think they have grandkids that are playing, but they're there rooting on our youth. And if they're not rooting on our youth, they're over there, you know, taking, keeping score, running the scorekeeper of All-Star Games. It's hectic. You ever been to an All-Star tournament? It's pretty crazy in there. And then I go to, I'll remember this one, it's JT55, I think it was last year, like 4:00 in the morning. I'm walking up, it's cold, and I see them standing there, shivering with a smile on their face. I go, what are you doing here? Helping. Helping, yeah. Then I realize they're helping their son. I have a son. I have kids. I don't know, 4:00 in the morning, they asked me how if I would have been out there in that cold. So, I sat back, like, oh, moving on. Other events, I see decorations on tables at city events we go to, and I'm like, oh, where'd you guys get these? Mom's making them, making them at home, saving the city money. Instead of going out and buying these things, she's being her craft, and she makes them. And I was like, wow, everywhere I go. So, for the last 24 months, everywhere I've gone, there's a touch of the clean scales, either the event or the volunteerism, or a city game in the bleachers. I'm in the top bleachers watching my kid yelling, acting a fool, and I look over and they're smiling. I'm at a softball game during the bleachers in the hot sun, watching the game. So, I'm just like, wow, these people are everywhere I'm at and more, because I do follow you guys, so. So, for the city, for 2025, Bob and Anita Clean Scales, in recognition and appreciation of your endless commitment and valuable contributions to the city of Twenty-Nine Palms by Mayor Stephen Bellerain, could you please come up here? And it's true, she yells at me every parade, because I go the wrong way, so I'm going. And she just stops and looks, and now she just looks at me. She doesn't even yell. She's... So, now I just do it on purpose. Now, we have a presentation for the new dog truck. Where's he at, the dog? Rick, you here? We have a new vehicle that we purchased. Rick's, he gave us, he just gave us a quick brief outside, but he said, tell us, everyone, how great this truck is. But you can save that presentation for later. This is for something else. That's the only way to get him here. We had to kind of like tell fib. Before we go into it, if you don't know who Rick Boyd is, I don't know where you've been. But that animal shelter is thriving in a positive, moving forward because of your leadership over the many years. Now, if you've ever worked anywhere or been a part of, even maybe in a marriage, over 20-some years, it's screening, right? So, he comes to work every day over 25-plus years, a smile on his face, ready to make today better for just our furry friends, but our families who are going to adopt him and hopefully get him out. His team, they're young, and for someone his age, I won't say the age, to work with someone at the age down here and be able to collaborate, yeah, I don't want to bring it up. I don't want to bring it up. For him to collaborate with such a young staff and still be positive, still moving forward with the social media, you guys attack that social media, given all our furry friends' personalities. People want to love them, take them home now, working outside agencies, outside-the-box thinking, moving outside the Marongo Basin to find homes for our pets that need homes, it's astonishing. And it's your leadership, your love and compassion for these animals. It shows by your teams and the work ethic that comes out of that. So, I want to thank you for everything you've done, keeping us out of the target of everyone else. You know, other cities are not having the great experiences that we have here, and I thank you for that. And thank you for everything you do for our families and for our furry friends.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, presented to Rick Boyd in recognition and appreciation of our endless commitment and hard work, valuable contributions, and many years of service to the city of Twenty-Nine Palms. You know who it's from.
Wow, thank you, Mayor.
And that's yours from your pocket.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate it. You know, we have, guys, we have a staff of five, but we have an army of 15, okay? So, that's what's making this place out. We're really proud, man, and I thank you all.
You gotta make your Facebook official. You gotta show your little plaque. You can take your presentation back.
Yeah, man, I work all day. Even brought my class. You might see it on Facebook later. Bye, guys. Thank you. Thank you, council members.
Right, I'll make this really brief, because we got real business to take care of, right? Hey, for the last 24 months, has been challenging, but also fulfilling and growth, just on a personal and professional level, serving as the mayor. The position of the mayor is not ceremonial, and it's not just a power position, it's responsibility. It's a responsibility to the citizens and the community and the city's face. So, this position, I take very seriously. I hope in the last 24 months, I was able to lead by example, show my real, true character. I know we don't agree. A lot of us agree on things, a lot of us don't agree on things. A lot of us agree and disagree on things, but I hope the whole time you felt respected and heard. And that was my goal when I started this many years ago. And every time I've been the mayor, I thought, well, the second time will be easy, and it wasn't. So, when I went back-to-back, I mean, everybody know what I'm doing. The year, once that calendar changes, Twenty-Nine Palms changes. The issues change, so you've got to stay on your toes. I know most likely the upcoming new mayor, he's done this, probably can do it in his sleep, but he knows just as well as I do, it's different every time. But what stays the same is the community, the people, or what, at least I know, I want to speak for the council, but we do this for them. If they're not doing this for them, then it's time not to do this anymore. That's just my little piece of the pie that I'm going to leave. And I hope, as your mayor for the last 24 months, I did it with dignity, honesty, and respect to all y'all, because this position to me is not just accolade. I have many titles in my life, and mayor is one of them. But dad is number one, Marines number two, and being on the city councils, in there with three, but it's a job. If you don't believe this is a job, that we just go up there for the 400-some-odd dollars that we get a month, the headaches are not worth it. And you can look, look at my picture, all dark. Ain't like that no more. So, I want to keep that up forever, too. That's going to go up here someday. That's why you remember me, not like this. But for Twenty-Nine Palms, I wish you nothing but health and wealth in 2026. I want to wish you all Merry Christmas. Staff, thank you for everything you've done for me the last 24 months. I know, Cindy, you're tired. You're probably glad I'm not doing this anymore, because, yeah, you don't got to be everywhere with me taking pictures. Council, thank you for your support, behind the scenes, upfront, everything we do. I know we always don't disagree on everything, but we respect each other enough to continue to push forward with the best for the city, not individual accolades. So, I appreciate everything you've done and what we're going to continue to do. And for the community, thank you for being you. You make this worth it. You make the headaches, the emails, the gray hair, and the long nights, and the scratching of heads, and reading social media and not taking it seriously, because most of the time, they won't say it to your face, so I just take it as face value, right? So, I thank you so much. Have a Merry Christmas. I love you all. Thank you. All right, council comments and reports of meeting's attendance, Councilman Octavius Scott.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say I appreciate your service as the mayor of the, over the past two years as well. And your leadership was, was very needed. Thank you. I attended the meeting, I attended the, winging its holiday Thanksgiving dinner as well as the Twenty-Nine Palms Band of Mission Indians toy, I'm sorry, turkey giveaway as well. And I spoke with many constituents, and that's all.
Councilman Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We got to take one last picture. And I, I want to give some birthday shout-outs, because it's a lot of people in December. So, if you have a birthday in December, I'm going to say happy birthday, but I'm going to call some names. Rochelle, Lavetta, my dad, and Ariana. Uh, Rochelle, Lavetta, uh, my dad, and Ariana. Um, she's a, she's the only non-adult, but anyway, happy birthday to all of them. Um, I also attended the, uh, Community Thanksgiving, uh, program, a service that we had in, uh, Freedom Plaza, the Minister Association. Um, it was very well attended, um, very nice event, and, and all that good stuff. I wasn't able to do the mayor's, uh, golf, um, tournament, because, uh, the Walhawks football, we was in the playoffs, and we had to travel to, um, Desert Hot Springs to play a game. We came up a little short, but, um, we'll get them the next time, we, we, we still got some football to play. My little superstar was sick that day, too, so, he was, he wasn't as, as effective as he normally is, put it that way. And, uh, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramirez?
Hello, I'm happy December, everybody. Rather than bore you with a list of all of the meetings I attended, I just figured I would do some of the highlights that were really important to me. So, this past Friday, um, I, along with NPHS, hosted a housing education session. NPHS is a nonprofit housing organization. Um, they're number two in the state of California as far as disbursement and deployment of grants. Um, most families, depending on if they're a first-time homebuyer and other areas, will qualify for up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in down payment assistance towards a home. Um, and so, we had forty-three people show up, and of those forty-three people, thirty-nine have now signed up and are going through the pre-approval process, so it's something that I'm very, very happy about. They're also going to be working with local nonprofits to develop any land that they own. Um, and then, one other thing that I thought was really amazing was, um, Cal Cities League of Cities, our division, the Desert Mountain Division, invited us to an award ceremony, and they said, "Someone from Twenty-nine Palms has been nominated." And when I saw that no one was going, I said, "Well, I'll go and maybe, you know, receive an award." Um, this award is a very prestigious award, and it is very secretive and very anonymous. You can't know who nominated you or why, you know, they just read it off at the end. And this is called the Larry Trimboli Award. And the recipient must share Larry Trimboli's dedication to public service through outstanding service, to municipal government leadership and activism, and have a high personal character. And this award was something that was established in two thousand and six. And, um, although another city took it, I just wanted to acknowledge that Dr. Stone James was actually nominated for this award, um, by multiple people. And it was just an awesome time to hear that his hard work does not go unnoticed. Um, his dedication to our city is really, truly one of a kind for someone to reach out to League of Cities, or for multiple people to reach out to League of Cities, and it was just, um, very, a moment that I was very proud. And on that note, I will wrap up with some also amazing acknowledgements. I'm sure everyone has heard my two-year-old in the back, that's Camila. Um, sometimes two-year-olds like to shove lots and lots of snacks in their mouth as fast as they can. We struggle with impulse control. And one of the days last month, while I was here, um, my two-year-old did just that. And then I heard a small little gasp, and then I realized my child was choking. And I just wanted to really thank and publicly acknowledge Dr. James for helping with that, as well as our city clerk Cindy Viescas, um, who both came to help and make sure that my daughter was safe and healthy and make sure she wasn't choking anymore. So, on that note, um, Camila has some little thank you cards for you guys, and maybe we can take a quick picture.
Mr. Mayor, before you, you go, um, I did, um, also want to mention that I was at the light parade and the tree lighting, and, um, asked them, who was in the, um, I don't know that, like, the futuristic?
The Halo?
No, the... Oh, that is? Yeah, that, tell them that was my favorite. I, I liked all of them, but that was my favorite, yeah.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I attended the, uh, Basin Transit meeting, along with Councilmember Wright, he just always forgets that. Um, I also, um, the Basin Transit, um, they do a great job every holiday. In fact, they're doing a, they'll be doing a toy drive here shortly, but they did a, uh, stuff the bus in front of Walmart, and, um, there was, the bus was completely full. If you, if you can imagine, there was tur, people brought a lot of turkeys out there, and I got to help spin the wheel for people, so that was fun. Um, had a mountain, uh, desert, uh, Measure I meeting in, in Victorville, and we gave out another one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars to the bridge that's going to be built on Split Rock. Um, that's been a long time coming, and of course, the longer it takes to build anything, the more money you have to give to it. So, uh, the Measure I, that's, that's part of that, uh, road tax that you pay, that, um, in San Bernardino County, it helps pay for the roads, and it actually, one of the few taxes that actually goes right to where it's supposed to go, so. Um, that's, so I also went to the SB TCA meeting in San Bernardino. Um, they've been doing a lot of talk about this, um, um, they're, they're trying to set up a, a housing, um, in a homeless type, um, I mean, it's not going to be a committee, but it's almost going to be like a coordination thing. They almost had it done until SB twenty came in effect, so they had to reword some of the stuff. But that's going to be coming down the road, I'll, I'll bring you more information with that, but it's going to be a really good program, because they're going to have access to a lot of federal money, a lot of county money, and just a lot of, uh, grant money that other folks aren't, aren't, uh, uh, can, available to, because they're such a big organization. Uh, I also went to the tree lighting, um, uh, lighting and the parade, and parked cars up at Sky's Limit. It just continues to amaze me how many people from all over the world continue to drive, to come up to that, um, the Sky's Limit to watch the, the stars. It just, some of them can barely speak English, and they, they try, because, you know, obviously, um, can't hear very well sometimes, but it's just amazed me how many, um, um, people from all over the world that come to, to that organization. So, I, I'm really proud of that organization. And I want to thank the mayor for his, his two years of service here at Twenty-nine Palms, and wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, before you go, uh, I forgot, I went to the JPA, too.
I, I noticed since he stopped going and eating there, he forgets where he goes, like. He always remembered, because of the food he went, he knew where he went. But now he isn't partaking some of the lunches, he's like, "I don't know where I've been," so. He started writing some stuff down for you, man. All right, uh, here we go. I attended the fundraiser for the Against Domestic Violence at Rosterita, it was well-attended, and they raised some money, and I got to swing the pinata while someone tried to hit it, and they missed every time. No, she was blindfolded, and I just moved it, and she just stayed there swinging, so. We raised some money, though. Uh, the Historical Society did a Marine Corps ball, uh, cake cutting ceremony, I got to be part of that, and I was fun seeing the senior Marines out there partaking in cake and festivities. That's always trouble, like, older Lance, older Lance Corporals out there. Yes, so, uh, uh, the mayor's golf, uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor and Mayor Protem's Golf Tournament for the toy fundraiser, part, partake in that, um, lost a lot of balls in the desert, so donated to the coyotes. Uh, Youth Council Meeting, I attended theirs last week. Um, just had a conversation about leadership, and I hope it was, hope you got what I was saying, and you guys are doing a good job, so thank you for that, continue to do what you're doing. I participated in the light parade, tree lighting ceremony, of course, and I attended the base tree lighting ceremony. And we were just kind of battling out, like, "Hey, ours is bigger and better," and I'm like, "Really, you want to go there?" So, there's a little competition going on now, so, but it's a good competition, there's all the community all together. And that's all I have, and, you know, once again, Merry Christmas and have a safe, safe New Years, and I'll see you all in January, sitting somewhere else, thank God, so. Onto the consent counter. All matters listed on the consent counter are to be considered routine by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any items will be removed from the consent counter are considered separately by the city council. The public will be given the opportunity to comment on the consent counter items prior to the city council action. Council, anything?
Yeah, I want to pull number eleven.
Number eleven. Public?
Is that the strategic plan?
I was going to say, is that the one?
And then I'd like to pull number fifteen for discussion.
Yeah. Mr. Bland, you want to speak, or you want your email for the record, which one do you want to do?
Uh, speak and vocal record for Claire.
Oh, okay.
So, he's pulling all the items?
It's eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, or eleven?
Oh. So, he wants to pull number twelve?
Wants to pull eight through fifteen?
Eight.
So, you, yes. Damn, how are we going to do all? How are we, Mr. Blandon, go ahead. You're going to hit eleven, then you hear a ding-ding, then we go right on?
I, I do have a request, though, if you could not comment on number eleven till you do them all, because I have to abstain from number eleven and leave. So, if you could do all the ones, and then I'll, I'll abstain from number eleven, then leave. But I want to hear your other comments, does that make sense?
So, basically, eleven last, before you can walk away?
Yes, just give you just your number, your comments on eleven last, because I have to leave the room.
Understood, thank you. So, I guess, start on twelve. Um, just, uh, this action will show transparency on why these decisions are being made. Sorry, let me start, I'm Carlos Blandon, resident here at Twenty-nine Palms. Some will say on social media, persona non grata, but, uh, we all hear. So, uh, number twelve, this action will show transparency into why these decisions are being made at the city level as an overall analysis of the city's voice. At least with this study, we can argue against those, uh, NIMBYs or just haters of progress or change. That is something different from their optics of reality, so this study will help give that voice more clear. Like, thank you, and fourteen. Yes, this is something everyone should get a refresher on, and, and an indication on our local groundwater, how we can keep future generations having access to clean drinking water. These studies are vital to make sure we can keep this goal. If you have not been reading about the Yucca, Yucca Valley and its groundwater legal issues, you should, because this is a warning sign to make sure we have a smart growth in our city. I like to think I'm educated, even though most people, when they get the opportunity, will love calling me an illiterate schmuck, because I try leaving things better than I found them. Be a good camper, leave no trace. Being a new homeowner was a septic system, made me learn a lot of changes in my personal habits that were learned on a city sewer system. Like, like, like Socrates, like Socrates said, "The only true wisdom is knowing you know nothing." Uh, fifteen. Yes, as I mentioned earlier, the world's, the word "smart" grows. This strategic plan is just that, a guide to plan us on track for a vision of Twenty-nine Palms to function in an intelligent way that is clear and will guide the future of council members, city staffs, and current future residents on Twenty-nine Palms. Goals and agendas that will all understand that the path forward for a community, reading the priority goals in this plan, there were a lot of hard work and efforts to create a great, effective list that would put Twenty-nine Palms on a brighter path. Financial stability is and should be a goal for most people, if not a city government institution should have it, as this will enable access to other opportunities, because we don't get bailouts like the private sector does. We eat the losses of those playing, playing games. Um, enhancing local character is a vital factor that makes any area different from another patch of sand. So far, I've been seeing great things for our community in this character development, thanks to these new, unique business owners who have tried to make things better through community events or local deals, and in a sense, creating what we call a third space. Offering a third space means creating a welcoming public spots like cafes, parks, libraries, outside the home, first place, and work, second place, where people can freely gather, socialize, linger, and build community, fostering, connecting in a sense of belonging without obligation. And that is key, obligation. Uh, like B-one in the plan states, promoting and encouraging local businesses, businesses, businesses enhances their places, making them more enjoyable by doing this, many great words, words have been spread about, many great words has been spread about of our desert hamlet. At Twenty-nine Palms, has been mentioned in many magazine articles in its unique character, which makes it attractive. Bravo to the folks at the Red Discover Twenty-nine and all the other shops that make this happen. Improving infrastructure, and a goal. Uh, yeah.
Okay, uh, well, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to make a motion for the consent counter and to leave, uh, obviously leave eleven and fifteen for discussion. And then if, um, as in order, if you, I don't know if you, I want to be in the fifteen discussion, so I don't know if you want to do eleven while I leave the room, because I have to abstain from number eleven, because, um, my wife has a shop in that area, so I have to, I have to leave, so, what?
Which is the fifteen?
Okay, and then do fifteen, then I'll leave, okay. All right, I'll move that, we, uh, the, uh, consent counter, except for number eleven and number fifteen.
Second.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Bilirane?
Aye.
Approved five-oh.
Okay, so we're going to do fifteen first, okay. Thank you, sorry for the switching it around, but this way I don't have to leave in the middle and then come back right at the end, so, thank you.
Who pulled fifteen? Adoption Twenty-nine Palms, five-year strategy plan?
Yes, sir. So, this, the str, this evening's strategic plan really represents the culmination of nearly a year of work. Uh, it started back with, uh, one-on-one interviews with the city council. It moved into two separate workshops in which the community could interact with the council, hear what's going on in the specific departments on Saturday, had the opportunity for the community members to come out uh, and really participate in a, uh, in a roundtable discussion, literally and figuratively. Uh, well, we also had a online survey that went on for about six weeks to ensure that individuals who could not come to the Friday session, who could not come and participate in the Saturday session, uh, or individuals who were not, uh, interested in writing letters to the city clerk's office, or the council, or myself, they could, they could interact online. And it was very intentional to ensure that we reached as broad a range of stakeholders as possible. And so, this is, after taking all of that information and putting it together, we have come up with this strategic plan. Now, this strategic plan, if it is approved this evening, is not going to be cast in stone. This is going to be reviewed on, well, from a staff level, this is going to be worked on, on a weekly basis. This will be coming back to the council, at least on a yearly basis, to update the sta, uh, the, update the council on every single goal, and then what the staff has done that year to accomplish that goal. And in a, going forward, if it's in six months, if it's in a year, if there needs to be some tweaking of the goals, then the council has the absolute full authority to do that. And in fact, the council has, of course, the ultimate authority to modify it at any point. And so, uh, this is, I think, an important agenda item. What this does is, this allows the staff to have a north star. This clearly identifies what are the priorities of the community, what are the priorities of the city council. And when you've got any organization, the farther down you go, and you start getting into more of the, the tactical work of a, in this case, a city, oftentimes, those individuals don't have the intimate knowledge of what council and the community are looking for. This strategic plan, a strategic plan, gives them that ability. They want to invest the time to read it, they will understand what is important to the community, where we're going, and this will ultimately help guide the micro decisions, the dozens or the hundreds of micro decisions that have to be made on a daily basis in running a city. So, with that, there were some things that were brought up, uh, that were brought to my attention. Uh, specifically, there was a, a mention of a specific project by a specific organization, and that is something that is... By a specific organization, and that is something that is, should not be in there. So that's something that I'm going to request, uh, be removed. And then I want to say that there's another council member or two that have some additional requests on, on things to tweak, language to add. Uh, and I think in one case even add a sentence about, uh, the theater twenty-nine. So with that, I can give that back to the council.
Well, that, I think you should mention what's gonna be, um, the, the fact that offland project was mentioned by name in this should never have been on there. So I, just make sure that the public knows that that's what's being stricken out of here.
That is correct, yes.
City council? Go ahead.
Alright, so, um, this is very detailed and I really like that. Just a couple of small edits on page seven, goal C, improved infrastructure. Um, I just wanted to add the grants that we are currently pursuing and make sure that that is something that is updated. If not, four times a year, at least twice a year, as far as, um, related to infrastructure. And then we get to page.
So Councilwoman Ramirez, can we just spend a moment on that?
Uh huh.
Uh, just to make sure, you're not looking to have the specific grants be named in the strategic plan, because obviously that comes and goes and, you know.
Correct, I'm looking on strategy C one, support development housing stock, C two, um, that we just add another bullet point. That says that we're going to be reviewing what's, what grants are available through the state to help us obtain these goals.
I understand now, okay, thank you.
And if not at a, you know, if not at four times a year, which is every three months, then at least twice a year.
Okay, so we're gonna be reviewing the available grants. Okay, very good.
And then on page ten, um, goal E, local tourism. One, um, I did meet with the, some of the T bid board and, um, the director of our T bid. And we talked a little bit about Visit California. And so, you know, most people think, oh, Visit California is, you know, California's T bid, so to speak. Um, but it really is a lot more than that. It is the number one website when it comes to international tourism for the state of California. And so, um, when we were talking about goal E, which is local tourism, we talked about really engaging Visit California. Um, so when it comes to the metrics and how we're gonna get to meeting goal E. Um, once we did a little bit more of a deep dive, you know, the first thing is gonna be to build and strengthen our relationships with Visit California. Just long-term, over the five years, um, with that starting effective January. And then, once you get into Visit California, there's actually Visit California Desert Branch. And, um, they have a rural grant program, which is a matching grant, um, to help with tourism. So, um, the TBA director just did also talk about wanting to make sure that that's one of the things that out, that is outlined. And then, um, but that matching grant is controlled through the regional, um. Representative for Visit California and Visit California Desert, which is, um, Greater Palm Springs. So that will be one of the key.
Partnerships?
Partnership, yeah, partnership accounts that we'll be working with. Um, then we're gonna say bullet point number two. Increase in Visit Twenty Nine Palms reaching and engagement across own digital platforms. And that's just, the wording on that is just gonna be a little bit more specific. To say that not only will there be a content creator, but they're gonna be looking at different social media partnerships.
Is that something we have to spell out in our strategic plan? I'm just curious, is that?
Yeah, because wouldn't all this have to be in motion?
I don't know, I'm asking, uh, I'm, I'm saying what was relayed to me as far as this, so whether you guys want to approve it or not, or whether you like these ideas or not. This is just something that they thought would be good to add as metrics and as ways that we're gonna get there, because these are very.
Some of these are, some of these are, should be more specific to the strategic plan of our T bid, uh, and not so much to the city of Twenty Nine Palms.
But the T bid is on here under goal E.
Yeah, so I think that's something that they should be talking to the city manager about on how to reach the goals that we have.
I think, I think the, where the conversation came from was that they wanted to say, moving forward, we're both sharing the same vision. So if it's in here, then it also makes it easier for them to say, we're moving forward with this, because it's part of the vision.
Yeah, but then that's like us redoing our whole strategic plan.
I mean, it's just the tourism part, not the whole plan.
Well, I, I just think that's really going too deep into the matrix of that. I mean, we've basically said that, that's up to the, uh, T bid, what to do the California. I mean, I just, I don't know, it just sounds, sounds like we're, if we put it in this, almost like we're saying, you have to do it if it's not a good idea for it's too expensive. I don't even know how much it costs or anything, so, I don't know.
I, I can, I can relay the message. I mean, I'm sure they'll watch it. I can relay the message, just let them know. You know, the council said. Figure it out amongst the T bid.
Talk to the city manager. And I mean, they, I'm happy that they would tell us how they're gonna do that. But for us to dictate to them to do it, I don't think is the right way.
And, um, because they have the authority as a, as a board to be able to do this without, it's not like the, the city of Twenty Nine Palms and the planning commission. Where there's a, there's a, a process that goes up, right? They're like a separate board. So they have the authority, uh, to do these things.
And, and I think, again, I'm, I'm not, I don't want to speak for them, I don't want to speculate, but I think that this information was shared and relayed. With the idea that they are trying to move towards a five-year, um, re-thought, reauthorization, and then this is a five-year plan. So I just, again, we shared the information, uh, I'm just giving you information that was given to me.
Okay, so it's, actually, do we need to, to lay the stuff that we, we talked about the, the taking the offland out? Do we need to just vote on that so that it's out of there? So, or just leave, say, we're gonna take that out, and I guess in this case, if we don't have enough consensus to leave, then we don't.
So then do you want to just skip the T bid and go to the next one?
Just, we just skip that? Is that, is that kind of the consensus before we do it?
We can make multiple motions on the floor, I think. And I can make a motion that we remove the ofland part from the strategic plan, because it, it shouldn't be there.
Alright.
So I, I make a motion.
Okay, well, I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second, so, so I, I like this idea of breaking it down. So motion and second on the, uh, on removing the ofland language.
Yes.
Okay, so then we would do a vote on that.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mince?
Aye.
Mayor Bildery?
Aye.
Approved five oh.
And then, though, I think there was another issue that was brought to my attention, and that was, there was potentially insufficient language on Theater twenty-nine. In terms of the city's interest in really helping further either expand the existing location or look for funding in order to ultimately build a, a new location. And so I think that there might be some interest from the council to make sure that that statement is added in the appropriate section of the strategic plan.
Well, that's under this strategy E three, where it says partner with the local business community to host and expand community event offerings that provide unique creative experiences. Utilizing existing facilities to complement, uh, other local and regional events. And this is EG Theater two nine, is that where you're talking about?
It is, it is, so.
So what, what is it that you're suggesting to add to that?
If, if there is a, if there is an interest from the council to strengthen the language or make it a little bit more overt in terms of. Uh, is there an interest in the city over the course of the next five years to look for opportunities to, uh, I, maybe obtain grant funds? Or funding from another source in order to, uh, expand or improve the existing facility and/or build a new facility.
Mr., uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, the last couple of, I think, for sure, the last two-year strategic plan, um, we did make that a priority, I believe.
Yeah, it was like number three on the list. In the last few strategic plans we've had, it's always either been one, three, two, or three, so. So it, so you're saying you, we should add more language to that, or is that, do you think we need to?
I think that we could, I think we can clarify it so that it is consistent with the prior two-year plans.
Okay. So, um, are we okay with the language that the city manager just said?
Can you repeat it one more time, please?
Uh, yes, sir. So I would, I would need to wordsmith it, right? But essentially, what I would seek to communicate in that is, is that the city will, uh, continue to look for funding opportunities. To either, uh, improve or expand the existing location or potentially build a new facility.
For theater, yeah. I'm, I'm okay with that. I'll make a motion that we go with that language.
Second.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mince?
Aye.
Mayor Bildery?
Aye.
Approved five oh.
Okay, now we can move on. Uh, were there any other comments? I think Councilwoman Ramirez has got some, some comments on T bid. Are there any other comments on any of the other sections that, uh, might be, uh, we can get out of the way, might be a little bit less detail?
One, short one.
Okay.
Um, I didn't see anything about AB two ninety-six in there. When it comes to code enforcement safety standards, so if we can add some sort of wording that allows the city manager to, um, implement. Because AB two ninety-six is changing and evolving all the time. Um, so if we could add some wording that would allow you to ensure that we are in compliance with that, then I.
Okay, I think that would be.
Really appreciate that.
That would be good.
I, I think that's something that we should probably speak to the city attorney about.
We, we can, we can do that too, because ultimately, whether or not it's in the strategic plan, that is something that we're gonna do anyway, right? Because if this is a requirement that we have to do, uh, this was introduced, uh, here just very recently, at least it was brought to our attention. And so I'm in the process right now of identifying, does this apply to the city? And even if it does not apply to the city, technically speaking, is, is it something that we should be doing for our code officers? So in all cases, whether it's in the strategic plan or not, uh, I am in the process of, uh, looking into this and figuring out. And, and if it is something that is, that we should do, either legally or ethically, it will be done. So it doesn't necessarily be.
That's it, thank you.
You bet.
Is that it for fifteen?
Uh, yeah, if there's no other, if there's, if, if the, uh, other council members have no other feedback, then we could probably resume the discussion on T bid. If there is any interest in pursuing T bid at this time.
We'll figure it out later.
Okay, very good. Okay. That is right. With the, with the, the previous, yeah.
Well, I have a letter from Mr. Adam Winger about item fifteen. It was the ofland. So I'm sure he's listening or make sure we get. Okay, just want to make sure it's for the record. Thank you.
Very good. That's, that's right. Uh, yeah, motion two.
So I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve, adopt the, uh, five-year, um, strategic plan.
Second.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mince?
Aye.
Mayor Bildery?
Aye.
Approved five oh.
Okay, this is where I have to abstain myself from number eleven. My wife has a shop in that area, so I can't vote on it. So I'll see you later.
You can't, you can't talk to her either.
No, no, don't talk to her at all. Stand on the other side.
I, I pulled this one because I was reading it and I just think that, um, I want the city manager to bring this one back. With, because we need to fine tune it.
Like, explain it, um, yeah. Yeah, we had the conversation.
Yes, yeah, I'd be, if, if that is the will of the council, I'd be happy to do that.
I'll let you go first and then I'll call them up to speak.
Okay, alright, and, and really just maybe provide a, a brief overview of the intent here?
Yes.
Okay. So this, uh, this agenda item, uh, council and community was, was created to address a problem. And really created to address the potential for, for injury or property damage. And so what we've got here is a, a thriving farmer's market. And it is something that the community has really grown to love and appreciate and frequent. It is growing in popularity and size. Uh, Mr. Roger Thomas has been doing a great job with the farmer's market. One of the things that, that unfortunately has happened, right? So when you come up with an idea and you put it in motion, it's. It's really impossible to think through all of the potential issues that come forward. And as, as life goes, you, you go in full force. And as you're working through the, in this case, the event, you start to identify problems or opportunities to improve. One of the things that has occurred is, is that cars will sometimes be left overnight in the Freedom Plaza area. And specifically, I'm talking about more or less the area that has the red pavers. And that area is really further delineated by the area within the pull-up bollards that are found in the street. And so what happens is, if someone parks their car there overnight, for whatever reason, maybe they, uh, car broke down, probably not. But if, you know, there was a car problem, or maybe if there was a, uh, someone had too much to drink and they, they made the right decision. And they decided to take a cab home, or maybe there was someone who was going up to the park. And they are not allowed to bring the car up there, because maybe there's too many cars in the existing campground. So they're gonna park their car in the city somewhere, they want to park it safe, and then take a buddy's, you know, take a friend's car back up to the park. So whatever the case may be, we have a situation where the farmer's market arrives at five or six in the morning on a Saturday. And all of a sudden, there's cars parked in spaces that have been identified for booths. And so, as you can appreciate, that creates a number of problems, especially as the farmer market has grown in size. Those booth spaces are taken up. And so now you've got a situation, if you're able to rotate that, and that one is, that one is of particular interest. So there's a great example. And so, so now we have to set up, Roger has to set up a farmer's market around these cars. So one of the concerns that I've got is that what happens if, or what happens when, the person who parked their car there the night before? Says, comes back and says, I want my car back. And so now you've got a potential concern between Roger. Or whoever's running the event that day on his behalf and the car owner. And so it would not be unreasonable to assume, given what we've just seen in the newspapers over the last two years. What happens if somebody decided to get in their car, because they're leaving now and to try to pull out? And is there a risk? And I think that, that answer is absolutely yes. That they could, that could result in injury to someone, a kid or a person, or property damage. And then if you go up one. And then if you are able to tilt it. That might be, can you right-click? And can you go over to the little circle with the? Uh, that didn't work. So we'll just have to use our imagination. So, or just tilt your head. So what happened here was, you had an active, ongoing farmer's market on a Saturday. All the booths are up, the vendors are there, the people are there. You have a farmer's market. And the gentleman with the pickup truck thought it would be cute if he pulled through the barriers, pulled into the farmer's market, parked the car and left. And so because there's no parking signs, Roger, Mr. Thomas, wasn't able to do anything about it. And so that, that was, I think, especially brazen. I hope that doesn't happen very often. And so the intent of this agenda item was to, was to really just make it official. Hey, you can't park your car here. So, uh, I can, would you like me to continue, sir, with some additional information to assuage some of the concerns?
Yeah.
So, and, and let me just land the plane on one other item here. And that was the timing. And so in thinking through what would be an appropriate time, uh, as reflected in the staff report. Staff thought it would be appropriate if we started it at midnight and went into Saturday. And that was based on going online, taking a look at a few of the significant businesses there and what their hours were online. And so then both of these two businesses that we had looked up, the business closed at eleven PM, so thought, hey, this is would be appropriate. Have it at twelve, have it at midnight, close it, or no parking at midnight, to give the staff time, anyone else to leave. So from the publishing of this to today, additional feedback has been provided, hey, some of these establishments are open later or may like to be opened later. So one of the things that was proposed was to change the time from midnight to maybe start at, let's say, four AM. So that would give individuals plenty of time to, let's say, their employees, and they close up and they clean and they do all of the things they need to do. They can get back in their car and they can leave. And so there's been additional, uh, discussion about when should the end time be? And so ultimately, if the council chooses to post. And so ultimately, if the council chooses to postpone this agenda item, which of course staff is completely comfortable with. Uh, then the staff can revisit this and do some more research, and come back to the council in January. Uh, if the council would like to move forward with this tonight, then we can have continued, uh, continued dialogue.
But what time does farmer's market actually close? One? I'm at three?
Yeah, I believe that the.
One, right? Because I'd be running up like twelve, three trying to get my food, so I'd be, yeah, I see you, yeah.
I got more time.
It's three, I've been running up to, so it's one. So it has to be after one, because if you don't have the signs, then people could do exactly what that guy did and pull in, so.
So that was the original thought process, was, well, could we have it just, there's a couple of hours in the morning. Let's say from, you know, midnight to six, or something like that, to where it would give Mr. Thomas time to go and set up. But then the realization that what happens if you had someone so brazen as the truck, and they pulled in, and they played the same game? Hey, there's no sign, you can't tell me. And Roger can't just do it on his own, because it's public property. So then that was the, the realization, hey, should we make this later in the day to cover really the full time? That they're already there, it's already blocked off, you already cannot access it. And so that was the thought process on making it a little bit later.
Yeah, I, I agree.
What's the later time?
Well, the conditional use permit allows Mr. Roger time up until, I wanna say fifteen hundred hours or three PM. But if I heard Mr. Thomas in the audience say that he typically ends at one.
Yeah, but those vendors are packing up, so you don't need people, more traffic coming in when they're trying to get out.
How, how long does it take you, Roger, to like, clear out?
So let's put three? That stops his people from folding up and leaving, and people coming in at the same time, kind of gives them.
It does.
Less incidents.
It, it does, and, and that's one of the things that, you know, I really kinda went back and forth on, was, is this something I should try to get on tonight's agenda? Or is this something we can do in January? And, you know, ultimately, of course, uh, happy to follow the direction of council in all cases. But, you know, part of the reason for, for doing it in a little bit more of an expedient manner is just, I didn't wanna have a situation where somebody got hurt. Because I took an extra month. But if we need to do that, happy to.
We've been, we've been working on this with legal and everyone for about three, three months now, Roger, I think, when you first brought it to my attention. Like, when it got serious when that car was there. So this has been going on for a while, and we've been lucky so far, we're rolling the dice that, so I don't know whether to wait till January to say three PM, or two PM, wherever we decide.
Yeah, no, I think this is definitely something that needs to happen. I think a decision needs to be made. Um, but I do think maybe we can make a decision and then maybe, in the future, maybe make a couple of amendments to certain things.
Oh, yeah, I think it's a breathing document, but it's have a standard right now that this is it, and if we gotta left or right it, we can left or right it. But at least, there's no parking, I mean.
Yeah, that, that's, I'm happy to.
The left and right can change, but there's no parking during Saturday mornings, yeah.
Right, and we need to, and then, and of course, that, yes, that is correct. We could establish that, and then we can start working on the signs. The signs need to have appropriate language, they need to be properly posted, because this is, we don't want any surprises, right? And so we want folks to know, and, and really, this is gonna be from, if, if council supports it, from four AM on a Saturday to three PM on a Saturday.
And there's also issues regarding like, um, where the vehicle can be towed and things like that, that needs to be worked out too?
Yes, yes, so I've, I've spoken to three different tow companies, and the, uh, so one of the things, I was a little bit nebulous in the report. Because I had wanted to provide Mr. Thomas the ability, as much flexibility as possible, to, you know, if it's possible to move the car. I have since determined that that is not possible. I, in my, it, based on my research, uh, it would not be, it would not accrue to his financial interest to move a vehicle, because that could potentially incur a liability on his part. And so this would be a situation where if it's no parking, then he comes in on a Saturday morning, and let's say there's two cars that are right in the spots that he needs, and that would be dangerous if they tried to leave during the, uh, the event. He would have to call someone from the city, the city would then call the sheriff's department, and, what, excuse me, call the towing company and say, would you please come tow this? Call the sheriff's department, and then really the, the sheriff's department would contact the tow company, the tow company would go out there, uh, and, and do that, right? And of course, then the tow company would then tell the sheriff's department, hey, we've picked up this vehicle, the sheriff's department would give them a report number. And then the person whose vehicle it is, when they call the sheriff's department and say, what happened to my vehicle? Then the sheriff said, well, okay, your vehicle is at this location. And then there are fees associated with that. And those fees are prescribed by the California Highway Patrol and the sheriff's office.
And all of that's gonna be on the sign and all that, or?
So we, there's, so, so I know definitively that in order to have the no parking, you have to have the no parking. And it has to stipulate certain things. No parking, what times you're not allowed to have parking, it's gonna be towed at owner's expense. And so there's gonna be certain things that are gonna be laid out on that no parking sign. Now, whether there's a larger sign, like I think Councilmember Scott has seen before, or I've seen before, where, you know, if your car is, has been towed, you can call this number for more information, that is something that I have reached out to the city attorneys to find out, do we need to have the larger sign? But at a minimum, we have to have the smaller sign that has certain prescribed things on it. And then also we make, must make sure that they are permanently mounted. And so, right, because you've got issues with unscrupulous tow providers in other communities, where they've put up temporary towing signs, right? And then that's really a predatory towing practice, so that has to be permanently affixed, which is what we would do anyway.
Alright. Yep, you guys good up here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm good now.
Mr. Blandon?
Just hearing about your decision on figuring out timeline, I also seen, just in public parks, that they say from sunrise to sunset, to give you that legal kind of freeway, you know? Um, just a thought. But yeah, I agree with his decision on being more clear on parking. Uh, but I suggest in solid signage, about long-term parking or overnight car camping in the lots. Uh, as I already told, using the same guidelines provided earlier on the federal norison camping on public lands. Uh, because we, as I mentioned previously, we had an issue of a person residing in his van in the dirt lot. And, um, the cops couldn't do anything, because there was no signage saying otherwise. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So.
I got one more. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, council and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having us and really looking into this, and Stone, it's wonderful what you have done. Uh, for, if we could go four AM to three PM, those are the ideal hours to not impede in anyone else's business, which we do not wanna do. We have businesses there that are friends and supporters that we're told it will harm. Our insurance has called us many times, it's warned us that we're gonna lose our insurance if this doesn't happen soon. And without our insurance, we cannot operate. So the sooner it's done, the better. If we can go from four AM to three PM, it's wonderful, it'll fix all of our situations. Thank you, and thank you for helping the market be a success. There it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a question about, um, when we put this sign up and it's permanent. Is, is Saturday the only time we're gonna tow vehicles?
Thank you, sir, for that question. Uh, at, at this point, I would say it would be called out on Saturday. And, and the, I think the whole reason is, is because of the farmer's market. So at, at this point, I would see no reason to tow any other times, although Mr. Blandon does bring out a good point, and that is the no camping sign. And so that is, I think, valuable, and that needs to be addressed. Uh, for simplicity's sake, I thought that taking this item now would be good. And get this done and behind us, should the council choose to do that. And then we can spend some more time taking a look at the no camping, what type of signs are required. There is additionally an ordinance that I think would be prudent, and that is some loitering, because we've had some problems with, uh, you know, some criminal activity periodically between, you know, behind the visitor center, between the visitor center and the Freedom Plaza. And so my thought was handle the no parking for the farmer's market this evening, should the council agree. And then we can come back, staff can come back, and then talk about more broadly the camping, and then that loitering.
So would a sign specifically say no parking four AM to three PM Saturdays?
Yes, sir, it would.
Okay.
Yeah, this would be, uh, thank you for clarifying that. I, I apologize for not doing that. This, this would be that, it would be very targeted about the no parking, and, and it would be posted really within that red brick, red paper area. And so it would be for that area, that when you pull up the bollards, that really becomes where the farmer's market is located, and it would only be on Saturdays.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I think we should also probably, um, and, like, moving forward though too, there's other events that are happening in the farmer's market as well. Um, and that's, that should, that's probably a future conversation.
Uh, I know when you do events, like we do the tree lighting, I know Parking Rec puts no parking, temporary no parking.
Temporary, okay.
They, they put that up there when we have an event like this, tree lighting.
Uh-huh, but, but we can't tow them though.
We can't tow them, but, but I know Parking Rec, I know Scott's out there like at four in the morning the night before. He's out there laying in spots, making sure no one parks there, so.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we, um, adopt the, uh.
Uh, that we have had on other no parking, so I imagine what the council can do is they can move to adopt this subject to the drafting of the resolution that the city attorney's office will provide. We could bring that forward in a subsequent meeting and have it ratified.
But can we use temporary no parking until then?
They're doing that now, I think, right?
There's none, that's the problem.
Yeah, there's, there, yeah, there's, there's none. So I think.
There's gonna be no towing, there's gonna be no parking. I think people see no parking, they won't park.
Yes.
I mean, that's the deterrent, right? Like.
It is.
Right now, they just say nothing, so they don't, they, they, they park. But maybe there's a sign saying no parking due to farmer's market, maybe like, oh, let me move, maybe, I mean.
And, and there will be, you know, of course, just the time for our Public Works Department to go ahead and design the sign, and then, you know, install them. So there's gonna be some delay there. That would give the city attorney office time to finish the resolution, and then, yeah.
So can we do temporary until then? That's the question.
So why don't we make, make a motion and approve it subject to the finalization of the resolution from the city attorney's office? If I need to bring it back before the council, then we will, we'll do it in January. If the city attorney's office is able to finalize it this week, then, and, and it's been approved subject to the completion of this resolution, then we'll put it in motion upon the finalization of that.
What do you got? You're smiling.
I think this has been a long time coming.
Yeah.
Mister and Mrs. Thomas do a lot for our community, not just the farmer's market, but really, when it comes down to the people. You know, some of our constituents that are dependent on EBT, they, they match their funds, they make sure that in the summer, kids have food to eat. So that, I'm smiling because this has been a long time coming.
Yeah, that's good. We good?
Yes, sir. Um, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, approve this document subject to the city attorney's office, um, finalizing the resolution number.
And I'll second.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Bildery?
Aye.
Approved four zero one.
Alright, public hearing done, and then discussion of potential action items.
So Mayor, this, uh, this is that annual event that the council goes ahead and selects who the mayor and the mayor pro tem will be for the coming year. And so with that, the council is free to discuss if they would like to make a motion on who would like to be the mayor next year.
Cindy, don't you have to read some?
Yeah.
I mean, I can read the background about what, what we made the change to be, and, you know, generally speaking, mayor, mayor pro tem serve at the pleasure of the city council. Um, in the past, they've been appointed by, at large elections, they were appointed by the most votes, uh, in an election. Then in May of twenty twenty-three, we changed that policy to indicate it would be based on districts. Then in December of twenty twenty-four, we made another change to go ahead and base this vote on nomination by the city council. So that's what's in place at this time. The city clerk would ask for nominations for the position of mayor. Traditionally, it's the mayor pro tem going into the mayor position. And then mayor pro tem would be selected by nomination.
Well, I make the recommendation that Mayor Pro Tem Mince become the next mayor.
Second.
Second? Um, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Thank you. Now the mayor will, you, you ask for nominations for mayor pro tem?
Oh, we don't switch. I'll close it, just calm down. Okay.
So now at this time, the mayor pro tem will ask for nominations for the mayor pro tem position.
Alright, so, no, me or he? He does it, I, I do, okay. So now I'm looking for, um, nomination for mayor pro tem.
Well, I think to get us back on track, it should normally fall to Octavius, so I nominate Octavius.
There a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody, aye? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Mayor Mince and Mayor Pro Tem Scott.
Okay. Alright, so it's been a while since I've done this, so do I, I do, uh, I finish this meeting, or Steve does?
It's up to you.
You can finish it, Steve.
I thought I was all happy.
No, no, you can finish this.
Alright, future council initiated items. Public comments. This is the time for the public to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city council that is not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the, whoa. Directed to the city council shall be considered any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. There's a time limit of three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, or you don't think everyone has, please fill out the name and address slips and give it to the city clerk. City council is prohibited by state law for taking action discussing items not included or pinned agenda. Public comments on specific agenda items will be deferred until consideration of the item on the agenda. Everyone's, is everyone here? Nope. Mr. Vino?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. My name is Vino Nathraj. I just wanna share a true story with the council and this room. I was born in a disadvantaged community, underprivileged. The town was smaller than twenty-nine palms. There's two things that our leaders and our parents focused on. One was job creation, and the other was education. Let's talk about job, job creation. I don't hear anybody in the council talking about job creation or education. And while I'm on the subject of job, I've been creation, we saw the Denny's close and become the Bennys. And if our town people did not see that coming five years ago, then we're not seeing a lot of thing. We all heard how the T-Bid director, Rakesh Mehta, stood here and said that he was the third highest-paying TOT contributor to the city coffers. He got a downgrade from a best western to a shore stay, and today from a shore stay, he's become an independent hotel. My concern is, if you go and look at the property, from the landscape to the property, there's a lot of deferred maintenance. And it's right in the entrance of our city. I think, uh, we should ask city staff to look at what the occupancies are in the hotels, and if the occupancy is not where it is, we should try to put a moratorium for about five to ten years on any further Airbnb or hotels being granted. And talking on education, what I call my farm now, and normally, when you have something in a farm, you go back and you look how the fruits are coming out on the tree. When I go back and I look at the farm that I came out from, those leaders, those parents, if they were, if they are still living, and if they were living, they would be very, very proud, because the kids that they produced today are doing exceptionally well, they have produced from Minister of Finance to Minister of Transport, to doctors, lawyers, educators, aeronautic engineers, you name it, they've done it. In fact, I talked to some of them, just one individual, he or she can either bring a workforce to a standstill or create hundreds of jobs. Let's try to focus in twenty twenty-six for job creation and education. Education is very, very important for our kids in the city. I mean, normally, as a parent, we look forward that we drive miles to put our kids in a good school. Thank you.
Thank you. Steven Reyes?
Good evening, uh, my name's Steve Reyes, I'm the vice president of the Twenty-Nine Palms Historical Society. About six months ago, a community member and I discussed possibility of the museum hosting a Marine Corps birthday celebration for the community. Uh, Mayor Bilduran already mentioned that he participated in this, he was way too humble. I asked Mayor Bilduran if he would be interested in, in being the master of ceremony, without hesitation, he accepted. On November fifteenth, the museum hosted its first ever Marine Corps birthday celebration with approximately seventy attendees. For not for the bad weather, we've been overwhelmed, uh, they would have, it would have been standing room only. Uh, the event would not have remained possible if we're not for Mayor Bilduran's commitment to the community, the Marine Corps, and the base. On behalf of the museum and its board of directors, thank you, Steve. So.
Hello and good evening, everyone. My name's James Dean, I'm a resident here in Twenty-Nine Palms, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Los Medicos Voladores, the Flying Doctors, and on behalf of Jeff Grabo, our corporate chair. Um, he wasn't able to be here tonight due to some family events he had to take care of, but we are here because we just got to end our fiftieth year of service with an event here in Twenty-Nine Palms. We held a vision event, uh, at the Freedom Plaza in the community center there, and we were able to actually help a hundred and thirty-two people get vision care, free glasses, everything, because of you guys allowing us to have our event. And we thank you all very, very much. Los Medicos Voladores, uh, this is our fiftieth, our golden anniversary. This is the year where we've been able to provide much-needed medical, dental, and vision services to the under-served for the last, you know, again, fifty years, but then this last year, it's been great, and we've got major plans coming. This event held at Twenty-Nine Palms Community Center in the Freedom Hall showed, uh, saw the community center turned into an optometry clinic that served many in need. Some of our own students, I'm a teacher here in the, uh, Morongo Basin. Um, we got to see my own students coming through, we got to see a lot of families, maybe even you had some families coming through, or maybe in the past, you've been someone who's come to one of our events. We do not care who you are, we do not care what, we just care about your need, and we wanna be able to meet that need, and that's all we are doing. And it's been a wonderful, wonderful time. We partnered this last time, the Flying Doctors, in partnership with Freedom, not, of, uh, Sight Foundation. We provided these exams, glasses, many of them which were got right on site, right on time. They fabricated them right there, people walked away, went home with them in their hands, and on their faces, and many of them with tears in their eyes, and that was actually pretty powerful. And any, um, I've been volunteering with this program since about twenty thirteen. I've been doing a lot of work, I am a clinic coordinator with them at this point. Um, I helped to set up all the clinics, I helped set up this clinic, and we have a clinic that's coming up in March at the Yucca Valley High School, in conjunction with Morongo School District. And, here's the thing. We wanted to thank you guys for us having that event, for allowing us to be there and use that facility. We had a wonderful time, everyone involved, uh, many that were volunteers there. Roger, of course, wanna thank you and the Farmers Market for accommodating us that day, and helping us out. And then, real quick, one last thing. We are always looking for volunteers, we're always looking for help, and we are absolutely always looking for donations. These events are not free, but they are free to everyone else, and we do everything we can. And thank you all, and have a wonderful, wonderful holiday season, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shrag?
Good evening, members of the council, and, uh, Mayor Bilduran, first of all, Mayor Bilduran, uh, thank you for your two years. Doing public service and, uh, um, public service and being, uh, an official is not easy. Uh, you guys get ridiculed, uh, you get ridiculed from all angles, so I wanna thank you for two years. Uh, it's important, uh, that we have elected officials, and we have public servants that do the work that we do. Uh, I just want to let you guys know, Matt Shrag, Twenty-Nine Palms Water District General Manager, I should start there, because I'm here today speaking as the general manager. Uh, tonight, I just wanted to let you guys know, we are in the middle of a five-year rate study. Uh, we have a rate study through AWWA about every five years, and our water rates are going up. Uh, I am putting on a quick campaign, early in two thousand twenty-six, I want, uh, the public to be aware that we want you there, we want to hear from you. So I'm going to do, uh, coffee with the GM. Uh, I've set up eight dates, uh, Tuesday mornings and Thursday afternoons after work. So we're doing morning crowds, we're doing afternoon crowds, and I wanna make sure that everybody realizes this is something extra the district is doing. Through Proposition Two Eighteen, the district does not have to set up these meetings. Uh, I wanna be very transparent to this public that water rates are coming. Uh, and to run, uh, a water district, to run a city, uh, if we don't have rates in place and rates increasing, uh, you'll see in my five-year rate study by the year five, we'll be way below our reserves, so. Uh, today, I'm just here as information, uh, I thank you guys for also having the septic management, um, stuff in the consent calendar, I think that's important. Septic management is important for this district to know that the groundwater, we are a hundred percent groundwater in this community, so. Here tonight to speaking, uh, about, uh, coffee with the GM, it's something new that we're doing. Uh, I do have some handouts, uh, our next one is this Thursday, uh, at five o'clock. There'll be multiple meetings in January, four, and then some in February, getting ready for our Prop Two Eighteen. So you guys will be getting Prop Two Eighteen notices in the mail, you guys will keep, be getting bill stuffers saying that we wanna have public participation. Uh, so please come out Thursday night and join me for coffee with the GM, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. Scott Curry?
Good evening, everyone, I also wanna thank you for allowing us to use Freedom Plaza. It was a wonderful event, James and Jeff are, they put in a lot of effort on these, these eyeglasses, and uh, last year was my first year to volunteer in Yucca Valley, it's coming back in March, it's gonna be huge, it's gonna be medical, dental, um, eyeglasses, lots of things, so keep an eye out for that, that'll be at Yucca Valley High School, March sixth and seventh, I believe? Seventh and eighth, anyway. Also, the second, I wanna thank, uh, Sandy for her leadership, and don't worry, because she's participating in educating our kids. Um, oh, back to the Freedom Plaza, Apple, I believe it was Apple Valley High School, had a lot of volunteers. Good quality kids, just really, really mature for high school kids, uh, nothing but impressed. Uh, then I, we did the wreath auction, wreath, um, for Copper Mountain College Foundation. Uh, you can, if you, they've got a lot of great, uh, classes. If you haven't had a tour of the college, talk to Sandy, she'll arrange it, it's amazing, one of my coffee buddies introduced me to it, and I totally got involved, it's impressive. Uh, they raised twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars for the foundation in one day. Uh, my accomplice, Brandon Burdette, who's, uh, uh, the president of the foundation, he made a lot of wreaths, top, top sales, uh, over seven thousand raised just on his donations, along with fifty other wreaths the community made. And also, we had the basketball, men's basketball team participate in the dessert auction. Chuck's dessert, I think, went for five hundred and fifty dollars for a cheesecake, I haven't tasted it, must be pretty awesome. The basket, men's basketball team was in charge of auctioning that, and they stepped up, and also, the men's basketball team. I was really impressed to hear their reading to Mrs. Burdette's elementary school class. Um, so, nice community involvement all the way around, nice kids, and I think you'll see more kids being educated at the Copper Mountain College and staying in the community, because, because they're learning job skills that they can use right here in Twenty-Nine Palms, thank you.
Thank you. I apologize now, MJ Fiaco? I always mess it up. Fioco.
Good evening, um, mine, I have a question for you. I do not understand why the city council is willing to spend fourteen thousand dollars for an engagement process for a tax increase next year, but isn't willing to do any public engagement in sharing its strategic plan? And I'd like to know what thinking goes into that, and what might be done to help citizens understand through public engagement where you're trying to steer the city?
We can't answer during, um, public comments?
Okay, I'm sorry, but.
No.
Then take it away as a thought?
Yes.
For future action? Because it seems really unfair that for something you want, you're willing to pay for public engagement. But for something that would benefit the cities, which is a higher awareness in the direction you wanna steer the city, crickets, that's all.
The city manager could actually answer what we spent on the strategic plan.
No, not developing the strategic plan, sharing the finalized version.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's not about the inputs, it's about the outputs. Thanks.
Uh, Danielle Reed?
Hello, I am Danielle Reed, I am a resident in Twenty-Nine Palms, I'm also a community health worker, I work with Reach Out. Um, I also work with our medicated assisted treatment program. So I work closely with individuals that are on their recovery journeys, and with that being said, some of my clients that I deal with on a daily basis are on their recovery journey from seven OH, which stands for, and, uh, please forgive me if I butcher this, it's a long word, um, hydroxy-mitrogene, and it has an increasing concern within our community, and it's something I'm super passionate about. So, seven OH is easily accessible in gas stations and convenience stores. It's often marketed in misleading ways that downplay its risks. Um, this false advertising not only targets adults, but it also puts our youth at ri, at risk. Um, by them presenting a dangerous substance, but they're presenting it as it's harmless. And another serious concern is that Narcan is not as effective for seven OH as other opioids and other substances, um, and this increases the danger for anyone who uses it in what, in our community. So I'm strongly believe that the council shall take, should take action to address availability and marketing of this substance that protects our community, and especially our youth. Um, and require, I think it requires responsible regulation and proactive steps, and my colleagues are here to hopefully give some more statistics and, um, information about seven OH. But yeah, that's all I have, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marissa? I figure the colleague that's gonna add more, alright. Should we talk about it?
Hi, everyone, nice to see you all again, um, yes, I am with Marissa with Reach Out, um, I have a medic, medication assisted treatment program, but basically, I work with opioid use. Um, today, I wanna talk a little bit about kratom and seven OH. Um, please understand that they are different, but they do work together. Kratom, it is basic form, is basically very little doses as a stimulant, you can buy it at grocery stores, gas stations, liquor stores, as a five-hour energy type bottle. Generally, it's, um, meant for children age high school, because it comes in flavors like Gummy Bear, and it comes in pla, um, flavors like Peach Rings. Um, but the problem is, the seven OH is being designed as kratom, and it's being sold as C K R eight. The reason I know this is not only because of what I do with the community, but myself, my brother, he works at the Circle K in Morongo, and he himself started his energy drinks about sixteen. Uh, by eighteen twenty, he has a very high chemical dependence on seven OH by getting the energy drinks from the gas stations, being introduced as kratom. It is not kratom, I have, in our office, we have fentanyl test strips, where you take part of the powder and or liquid, and you test for traces of fentanyl. This seven OH is being tested positive for fentanyl. What does that mean? Doesn't mean necessarily it has fentanyl, but it's working like fentanyl in the sense of it's having opioid-like offenses. Well, I'm fortunate enough to know that my brother is getting help that he needs, um, but it was very scary to know that sixteen-year-olds are getting these, and they can buy them over the counter without any dis, policy, no change, nothing. Um, we have clients in our program now that are really struggling to get off seven OH. It was pres, it was for, recommended with a hot heroin overdoses and fentanyl overdoses to use krat, seven OH to get off of the opioids. What we're finding now is that the Narcan and the medications we use, such as Suboxone, which is known as buprenorphine, does not help the withdrawal process like it would at the regular doses. Basically, this substance is out there being sold without any policy, and it's not having any kind of regulation through the FDA. So I do encourage you guys to please take this, I have lots of information, we can talk about for hours. If you have any questions, you know where to find me, I'm usually here. Um, but yeah, I, it's very dangerous, and it's affecting our community personally, and for me professionally, thank you, guys.
Did you wanna stay up there? You're next again, let's use someone else with same name.
Yeah, no.
Alright.
Um, forgive me, that was, um, something that was stricken earlier, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Kish? I said that right? Kish like fish, I'll never forget that now.
Good evening, council, good evening, city of Twenty-Nine Palms. My name is Carrie Kish, I'm the program manager for Reach Out. For, within Reach Out, we service areas from Morongo Valley out to Pioneer Town, Landers, Joshua Tree, Twenty-Nine Palms, and Wonder Valley. We hold the environmental prevention contract with the city of San Bernardino County Department of Behavioral Health, and, um, as my, um, colleagues spoke about earlier, we are extremely concerned about this emerging substance. Um, we have been following lots of substances, right? We've come to you probably before, talking about other types of prevention strategies. This substance, within the last three months, um, within the last month, we've, um, taken in three new clients specifically for this substance. Um, it's not well-regulated, it's available on the shelf. One of the, um, someone literally showed me, it's a little, a little purple package that looks like a single-use Tylenol or something like that. It has Bubbling Brooks on it, and says, you wanna relax. Um, this, um, substance is extremely addictive, um, people are having to take it eleven to twelve times a day, which gets very expensive. People are having to take it 11 to 12 times a day, which gets very expensive, and it's really controlling their lives. The withdrawal symptoms are very similar to opioid use disorder, which if you're familiar with, is the, pretty much the worst flu of your life coupled with the worst anxiety of your life. We have been extremely successful with our Medication-Assisted Treatment Program. However, this substance is not being as easily treated, and I am concerned for our community. I'm concerned for this getting into the hands of children. It's often not behind the counter, it's often right there by the register, easily taken. So yeah, I would just encourage if, if we could start a dialogue about improving the enforcement of existing regulations and possibly adding some additional policy as protections for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leanne Clark?
Thank you, Leanne Clark, Secretary for the Twenty-Nine Palms Ministerial Association. The Ministerial Association would like to thank everyone who attended and financially donated to the annual Pioneer Day Sunrise Service held on Sunday, October 19th, at Patriotic Hall, as well as the Community Thanksgiving Service held on Sunday, November 23rd in the gym at Freedom Plaza. An offering was collected at both services totaling $612, and donation checks were presented to local nonprofits, the Alex Roth Memorial Food Pantry, and Set Free Ranch at the association meeting this morning. Next event to put on your calendar, you'll be hearing more details, is the Martin Luther King Jr. March and Prayer Bowl that is scheduled for January 19th. Be sure to put that on your calendar, and again, we will inform you more as we approach the January date. In addition, we would like to thank Mayor Buildaran for serving as the keynote speaker for the quarterly mayor's prayer breakfast, not only last year, but this year as well. And we also want to thank the community for its support. In addition, we want to thank the city staff for always assisting us, especially Parks and Rec, Haywood, Adams, and Scott Clink scales, as well as the team at Park and Rec in assisting us in setting up over at Freedom Plaza. And we also want to thank Cindy for always assisting with the proclamations that are presented at the various services that really incorporate the, the cooperation and partnership between the city and our residents and our church community. And we just want to wish you all a Merry Christmas, a beautiful New Year, and we're looking forward to 2026. Congratulations, Mayor Mins. You gave me the Citizen of the Year Award back in 2016, so glad to have you back. And of course, our mayor pro temp, Octavia Scott, congratulations, and may you have a blessed rest of the year and a blessed year, and prosperity for all of us in 2026. God bless you all.
Thank you. Well, the dreaded city manager's update?
I'll be able to breeze through this 30, 40 minutes flat, not, not, not a problem at all. So, so really want to just touch on a couple of things. One is to say thank you. Thank you for what I have seen as a great year, and that thank you goes out to all of the people who work together to make this city the great city that it is. So the commissioners, the animal shelter volunteers, the animal shelter foster parents, the businesses, whether they are in Rediscover 29 or the folks that have joined Rediscover 29, both the businesses and Rediscover 29, what they're accomplishing is absolutely amazing. The folks up at the Historic Plaza, all of the different business owners coming together, and the residents. We saw a couple of just outstanding residents today with Ms. Audrey Philpot and Ms. Anna Stump, and them coming together and pursuing this grant, and now we're going to have 30 events over the next three years. Just so impressive. So I'm appreciative, I'm grateful, wanted to acknowledge them. Also wanted to thank our city staff, you know, the folks, whether it be in Parks and Rec, or Public Works, or Animal Control, or Community Development, or the City Clerk's Office, or Human Resources. We do an awful lot with very few staffing folks and very few resources, and just to acknowledge them and all of the hard work and the care and the, the dedication that they have to the community is touching, and it's most certainly appreciated. Also, the partner agencies, our Twenty-Nine Palms Water District and everything Matt and his team do to make sure that we've got clean, reliable water. It is a heavy lift, and they do an awful lot, and they're doing it at such an affordable rate. Our fire department, police department, our national park, our Marine Corps, even Basin Transit, and a Morongo Basin ambulance, and I also would like to specifically call out, it looks like he's gone home, Steve Reyes and Glenn Harris, and Supervisor Don Rao. And so I'm sure there's a ton of people that I have inadvertently left off, but really all of those folks coming together, working together to make this a wonderful city. And so with that, I also want to add one thing that someone brought up in terms of TOT. This was something that was encouraging, and I think that is a result of our T-Bid. And we saw this last quarter, over the quarter from last year, we saw a 9% increase in the TOT that's coming from the city. And when you break that down, that 9% TOT increase, 16, there was a 16% increase in TOT coming from hotels. And so all of the folks, all the hotel owners that, you know, create a place that people can come and stay is much appreciated. So with that, I will close.
Wow, okay. Sure. All right. In the air like that. Yeah. Once again, the last two years, thank you, staff, for everything you've done for me and the council. Council, thank you for having my back the last 24 months, and I will be returning the favor next year. To my family, friends, I know you're listening out there, thank you for supporting me and being there for me. And to the community, thank you. Once again, thank you for being you, being, being great. And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor pro temp, I wish you the best success in 2026. Thank you. This is meeting adjourned.